So I am sitting in for him and I'm going to go ahead and call it to order tonight's meeting of the Board of Education. If you would please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is action on the agenda. Mr. Domon, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion from Dave with a second by Leslie. Any questions or discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Next up is action on minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on November 8, 2021, as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Jen with a second by Dave to approve the minutes from the previous meeting and those are in board docs. Are there any questions or discussion about the those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next up is action on vouchers.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $354,293.72, as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion from Leslie with a second by Dave to approve the vouchers as presented in board docs. Any questions or discussion about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Looks like we don't have any student council reps tonight. Next up is public comment. We have five speakers signed up to speak tonight. First up is Dan DeFor. And if you would just give me one sec, please, Dan, while I get my timer ready, you can come on up. All right, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Dan DeFor, a resident of Janesville, and I live within the Milton School District. It's time for a change, dramatic change. For months, informed parents and citizens have been pleading with the district leadership the following: Milton should follow the scientific data rather than blindly following the CDC or Rock County Department Health recommendations. They've been saying their children have been negatively impacted physically, emotionally, and psychologically from the COVID policies, specifically the masking policy. Based on this information, they simply request a mass choice policy which rightfully puts put the health and safety decision in the hands of the parent. Instead, this is what they've been told by the school board and the superintendent: The district will blindly follow the CDC and Rock County Health recommendations. The COVID protocols and the Milton Forward Plan are working, with no comparative data to prove its claim. Well, now, we have the comparative data, which not only shows the Milton Forward Plan is not working, but it's a failure, a failure to the students that's intended to benefit. This past week, DPI released the district scorecard, which is an amalgamation of the scores from various standardized tests which students take each year, except the 2019 and 2020 school year. This is meant to give everyone an indication how well or poorly the district is performing in teaching our children versus other districts in the state. Just like a student receives a report card, the district does as well. Here are some key takeaways from the district report card. Milton's overall accountability score declined 14%. That is four times the state's average decline over the same two-year period. English language arts scores declined nearly 12%, more than twice the state's average decline. Math scores declined 19%, a 67% greater decline than the state average decline. Overall, the Milton School District went from being ranked around 95th out of 420 districts to about 300. That's a dramatic drop of approximately 200 places. Yes, the last two years have been a dramatic seen a dramatic drop in academic achievement scores across the state, but Milton has dropped at a dramatically faster rate than other districts in the state. As I pointed out in my comments, now is time for dramatic change, more specifically, a change to the Milton Forward Plan and its COVID policies. Many reasonable and thoughtful suggestions are being made this evening by informed parents and citizens I hope leadership will listen to. We also need a change in leadership, which thought they knew better, but they clearly did not. Thank you.
Next up is Louise Raffelson. I'm here today to ask you all to take action on the current COVID protocol and how it doesn't take into consideration the fact that each school in the district doesn't share space with each other. Why are we hindering learning by spending time enforcing strict COVID protocols on schools that have no evidence of their individual school community spread, simply because other schools in the district do? The same goes for if we have, for instance, eight active cases in the district and they are spread out one or two cases among all of our schools, we're forcing strict protocols on the children for just one or two cases over hundreds of kids in their individual communities. It's beyond time to start looking at what we are doing as a district to heal the divide that has been created by COVID, both in educational proficiency and also with parent mistrust in the district leadership and this board. Now it's time for action, not the end of January like the superintendent wants. Our test scores that were published recently by DPI were devastating, and I encourage anyone listening to this broadcast to look for themselves. 11th grade math proficiency was only 17.8%, and reading proficiency for the same level dropped by 15.2% since just before COVID. I propose, again, that we consider a new, more up-to-date and accurate COVID tracking and guideline model for our district, a model more conducive to learning that takes into consideration the individual school needs by giving them each their own case breakdown, along with permission for each school based on their own snapshot to move to or from specific guidelines based on that school's individual needs. As I pointed out in my emails, there are other schools nearby that we can model off of that are already doing this, Jefferson School District, for example. Proficiency testing scores have been on the downward trend since before COVID. We can't afford to sit by and allow them to continue to drop further. We owe it to our kids to do everything in our power to get this district back on track and not settle with almost average. It is time to get back to concentrating on education in the classroom, using learning time for education, and not policing things like proper mask wearing if it isn't truly needed. Thank you.
Next up is Kristen Gibson. Hello, my name is Kristen Gibson, and I am a mother of three young boys, two of whom attend the district. Tonight, I come to share encouragement. I am encouraged by the success my family and friends in neighboring public school districts have had in keeping their children in school while having been masked choice since the beginning of the school year. I am asking you to make a plan forward that will allow all students the opportunity for mask choice as soon as possible. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name's Heather Moore. I'm probably the only parent here who has children in Consolidated. We received a text message about two and a half weeks ago on a Thursday at 4:56 PM saying, "Urgent message from your school principal. Get home, get an email." Consolidated School's been shut down, effective immediately. 5 o'clock on a Thursday, I have no childcare lined up for Friday. I have nothing that I'm capable of being able to do and spend the next two hours trying to figure out how my children are going to be taken care of, how I'm supposed to be able to go into work, how I'm supposed to be able to manage childcare for my child while having to pivot into a virtual model. During this summer, when this administration put forward the Milton Forward Plan to you guys, it was never conveyed that the administration can just go in and close down a school. I've been watching every meeting. If I'm not here physically, I'm online watching the meeting. Not once did this administration tell you that they will just close the school down. And when I speak to the superintendent, we as parents are supposed to just automatically assume that for the past 18 months, school can just get closed down. That was not conveyed. I've had no knowledge of this. As a parent, I have been ready and willing, should my kids have to go into quarantine or should they become a COVID-positive student, of what can happen. I, as a parent, had no background and knowledge that if there's an outbreak at a school, hey, we're just going to close down the school. Consolidated is the smallest school in the district. There's 88 students. I understand, because we're a close-knit school, almost all of us parents know each other, our kids all play together, but the outbreak that occurred at Consolidated was in one classroom. That classroom should have been the one that should have pivoted to virtual. You should have not penalized the rest of these students for two weeks. Force parents to have to file FMLA, have to telecommute once again, because we as parents have to make sure that our kids get on their Google meets and make sure that they're getting all of their schoolwork done. So I ask the board to really consider and reconsider what's going on with what the administration has put forward towards you in this Milton Forward Plan.
Next up is Tracy Hannah. Good evening, board members. My name is Tracy Hannah, and my son attends Milton Schools. I'm here tonight to request that immediate changes be made to Milton's current COVID protocols in line with our community and with other school districts in our area. Parkview, Beloit, Turner, Clinton, Edgerton, and Evansville all have some form of mass choice policies in their school district, as well as almost all of our local businesses. Schools in this area seem to be the only places remaining without mass choice. I am making this request based on looking at the data from the Rock County Health Department and showing that although cases are increasing, the vaccines appear to be limiting the severity of the disease, as the current hospitalizations in our area have been between 20 and 30, and that is since the end of August. This time last year, hospitals were at 72. In addition to the initial vaccines, there are boosters and therapeutics available for those who need them. I would like transparency from our administration and from you, our elected officials. Today is November 22, 2021, and we are on day 614 of this pandemic, and according to the media, our fifth wave of the virus. On Friday, Mr. Domon published a release stating he would present a recommendation to you on December 13 to possibly take effect on January 24. I am not sure what Mr. Domon thinks will change between day 614 and day 677 of the pandemic, when all available medical weapons this country has to offer are currently being deployed. It truly boggles the mind to use a school calendar to determine an action on COVID protocols. And if that is the case, the next trimester in middle school starts next week and would seem to be a good time to action mass choice, as there are vaccines available to those over 12 since May. I would also request that this board immediately suspend the quarantine policy and return to a stay-at-home-if-you are sick policy, as the back and forth and worse, the closing of an entire school is detrimental to the learning process. Why couldn't a policy such as close contacts need to stop into the nurse daily during their contact period and have their temperatures checked for fever, rather than healthy children being forced to stay at home when they are not showing any signs of disease? This would apply to all students vaccinated or not, and it has become common knowledge that vaccinated people can spread the virus the same as unvaccinated. If not, students would not be sent home when a vaccinated student tests positive for the virus. Let me ask this room one question. Did anyone here think Aaron Rodgers was going to die of COVID? I didn't. He's strong, young, and healthy. The group's shown to fare best against this virus. So why do we mask the young, strong, and healthy among us, especially when the current vaccination rate in our county is approaching 60%? And just last week, 1,603 children between the ages of 5 and 11 were vaccinated. I ask the board tonight to not wait another 63 days. I ask for transparency from this administration as to why that date was chosen. Please do this for our kids and our community and bring us together to bring us focus back to learning. And I also wish you a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Okay, next up is superintendent update, and the first item there is the inclement weather update.
I wanted to update the board on a few things regarding the upcoming winter. We did send out a parent letter that we send out annually, listing our protocol for inclement weather. In general, we close our schools if the National Weather Service issues a winter storm warning during school hours, or a wind chill warning, which is sustained 35 below zero wind chill throughout the day. We currently are above our instructional minutes requirement from the state, so initially, any canceled days or partial days wouldn't be made up or wouldn't be a pivot to virtual instruction. But as we get into the winter, we may need to do that, depending on how many days or if there are days that get canceled. So just wanted to update the board that that has gone out, that we're starting the winter season with traditional snow days where there isn't any instruction, but we may have to shift to either instructional time on those canceled days or add days if we get closer to the number of instructional minutes.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions about that weather update?
Then the other topic on the superintendent's update is the COVID-19 data and Milton Forward Plan. I wanted to update the board that in early November, the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association announced that our COVID-19 Family Guide, the Milton Forward Plan, received the Award of Excellence for their special publications category. That group noted that the guide stood out for its simplicity, its thoroughness, and its value to the general public in helping to navigate such a complicated issue. So congratulations to our staff that have put a lot of time and effort into both the writing of the Milton Forward Plan and communicating that out with families and staff. I wanted to update the board on the situation at Consolidated Elementary School. We made a decision to go fully virtual for two weeks. That was through November 19, which was Saturday of last week. There were positive COVID cases across multiple grade levels at Consolidated Elementary, and significant number of close contacts between the positive cases and the close contacts, over 50% of the students at Consolidated were out for a period of time during that stretch. So we made the decision to pivot to virtual instruction. And then, as I said, we were back on site on Thursday and Friday of last week. It was good to get students back before this week, before the no school this week. And the number of positive cases and close contacts at Consolidated now is extremely low. An update from Rock County Public Health Department, positive COVID cases are increasing across the county and the district and the state. At one point last week, across the state of Wisconsin, it was the highest number of new positive cases since December of 2020. Over the past two weeks, there have been eight COVID-19 deaths in our county. Again, that's over the last two weeks. Hospitalizations remain steady. As of Thursday of last week, 3% of ICU beds in the county were available. The chart that Kim has listed has data through the 11th of November, and you can see on that chart, that's the number of positive cases per 10,000 residents. That's not specific to students in any of the school districts listed. That's all residents, but you can see that that number remains steady from the previous, and we don't have any more updated data on that than November 11. Do you have some data on vaccinations across the county, actually, across our school district? About 62% of the residents in our school district are fully vaccinated, and about 54% of our 12- through 18-year-olds. As we know, the vaccine now is available for 5- through 11-year-olds, and we had a very popular vaccine clinic that we hosted last week, and about 22% of our 5- through 11-year-olds have received their first dose. They're not fully vaccinated yet, but they have received their first dose, approximately 22%. And we have seen that the vaccine is highly effective in limiting hospitalizations and deaths, so we continue to strongly recommend that, not only for those 5- through 11-year-olds, but also for 12-year-old and up, whether it's students in schools or staff in our schools. We strongly encourage people to get vaccinated. On our dashboard from last week, this went out last Friday, and the data was as of Thursday of last week. You can see it on the screen. We had a total of 26 student cases and four staff positive cases, and 104 quarantined students and four quarantined staff members. That's the highest number of positive cases for the year for both students and staff, and similar number of quarantines from the previous week. And in general, our school district has followed the two principles that have served us very well. We work hard to limit the risk to the safety to our students, our staff, our families, and communities, and continue to provide a high-quality education for all students. We'll continue to communicate with Rock County Public Health Department and make decisions based on the available data. At this time, even though there are increased number of positive cases, both among the greater community and among our students, I'm not recommending any either tightening or loosening of our safety protocol at this time, recommending that we continue with the Milton Forward Plan that we have in place. And I did share out in the Red Hawk Review on Friday that as the 5- through 11-year-olds have the opportunity to become fully vaccinated, and we look at the positive case data over the holidays and see how that changes, I have a target date of bringing a recommendation at the December 13 school board meeting, a target date of January 24 as a possible date to loosen some of our COVID restrictions if those 5- through 11-year-olds are able to get fully vaccinated and we see some progress in the number of positive cases. A question was asked earlier about why that date and why it's tied to the end of the semester. We have a number of students that have chosen to be virtual during the first semester because of our COVID protocol, and if we make that change at the semester break, and there are students that choose to either come back onsite versus virtual or switch from onsite to virtual, that's a good time for our students to do that. And it also gives us time after the holidays to see how much spread there is back in our schools. So that was everything that I had in my update, but be open to any questions or comments from board members.
Rich, I understand the first vaccine clinic hosted at the high school, I know sold out, it's not the right word, but essentially sold out. Is there plans to have another clinic potentially, or what is the status of that?
There wasn't the availability to have one anytime within the next couple weeks, because they're hosting them at other sites. There is availability at a couple different locations in Janesville on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and most pharmacies have the vaccine available for 5- through 11-year-olds. So the only thing that we have scheduled now for our 5- through 11-year-olds is we will do a follow-up onsite clinic for the second dose for those students that received their first dose in our previous clinic.
Do you know, assuming they have availability, will they allow first-dose students as well at that clinic, or is it strictly for second dose?
I'll have to check and find out for sure. I would recommend if there are families that are interested in getting the first dose of the vaccine, to not wait that long, to go ahead and do something with their pharmacy or through their own doctor or through one of the clinics that are set up in Janesville. And if there are people out there that have questions about that, we can get them information about where they can go and who they can contact to make that happen.
Thank you.
I actually would like to make a motion, since action can be made at this time. But before I do, I'd like to give some reasons behind this motion that I'm about to make. So I understand the information that was provided here tonight, and I understand that we've been following Rock County Health and the CDC guidelines. Unfortunately, they are not specific to Milton, and especially the CDC. If you look at the snapshot from 11/11, and I realize that the numbers that have been provided for the last week are different, but on 11/11, you can see that we had 48.02 cases out of every 10,000 people. We were the highest in the county, and with universal masking, you know, it begs the question of, like, is this really working? As was indicated, and in my own research, hospitalizations have been fairly steady since August. You know, cases amongst students are actually declining despite what happened at Consolidated with the four or five cases that were there. Vaccinations are at 60% in the county, and they were 64% for our district before the opening of ages 5 to 11. And of course, that's probably decreased a little bit with the increase in population count, but regardless with our popular vaccine clinic that we had, I'm sure that number is going to increase for us. And while closing Consolidated was very disappointing, I do want to offer praise for the staff and Mrs. Stocky who had to deal with that situation. Nobody wants to be put in that situation where they have to come up with a solution like that. So I think it's remarkable what they did. It's disappointing that the school had to close, but we also need to consider these things, too. You know, if this was about health and safety, then we'd be masking everywhere we went. We'd be masking if we went to a Chamber of Commerce event. We'd be masking if we went to a Badger game, or if we went to the grocery store, or convenience store, or a party. But the point of that, you know, most of us are not. And so when we come back to the building and mask up, we're still spreading the disease, the virus. I feel like we're stagnant right now, and we do need to keep moving forward. I'm not sure. I mean, I understand the whole semester date, but it's not going to change anything. We're not going to see a dramatic increase. All the numbers in the districts surrounding us have been steady, and most of the districts surrounding us have some form of mass choice. So I'm going to make a motion that we alter the Milton Forward Plan as follows. As of November 29, 2021, all quarantine policies will end, and instead, we'll revert back to what we have always done prior to that, which is self-monitor. And when a positive case is found in a classroom or close contacts are identified, they'll be sent a letter home letting them know they need to self-monitor. Because they've had significant opportunity to get vaccinated, then as of November 29, 2021, the middle school and high school students and staff will move to a mask option policy. And in order to give the vaccines ample time to work for those elementary students seeking to get the vaccine, then the elementary students and staff will move to a mask optional policy, January 3, 2022. So that is the motion that I make.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'm going to second it because I want to hear it discussed.
Okay.
Can you get all that?
Okay, I can do that right now.
If you want to listen right now, at the moment.
I can send it to you. I can send it to you.
Just a couple of comments. I know there was some discussion regarding the prior district scorecard, report card versus the current one. And certainly there's been challenges for not only Milton, but everyone across the state and across the country in the last 18 months. I think as it relates to us, one of the primary challenges was pivoting to virtual. I know I have I have two students in college where they're required to wear masks and I have a son here in the district who obviously is wearing a mask. And the ability to be in person has been, I think, vital for them to perform at an academic level more so than being. That is a much smaller issue, if any, than them having to be virtual. And I think I'm comfortable thinking we're 99% that point and then I think, you know, bluer skies are ahead. Additionally, you know, the difference between going to the grocery store, going to a restaurant is that 99% of the student, well, until recently, a vast majority of the students didn't have the choice to be vaccinated, whereas the people in public places did. And because of that, I think we need to be sensitive to protecting those who have not had the choice. And at this point, I mean, we are only several weeks away from the majority of all of our student body having the option through themselves or through their parents, depending on their age, to be vaccinated. I think it's prudent to have them get their second shot and have them have the opportunity to become fully vaccinated. I feel like we're at the one yard line here and, you know, we need to see this through. My son has gotten his first vaccination out of these all. And even in spite of that, it's going to be several weeks till he gets a second one and several weeks after that until he's considered fully vaccinated. So I think making a change now, again, using the analogy of we're on the one yard line. I'm excited for us to make a change, but I don't know that we want to make it immediately. We want to give these last 5 through 12 year 5 through 11 year olds the chance to become fully vaccinated and given not everyone can go out and get a shot on demand, we have to give them time to actually physically schedule these appointments and see them through. Only my thoughts, certainly the rest of the group are curious to hear your thoughts on it, but like I said, I feel like we're almost there.
Rick, if I could share a couple of quick things, there are a couple of things that were stated preliminary to the motion being made that I want to make sure accurate information is out there, both to the board and the community. It was shared that student cases are declining and that's not the case. Either it's not the case in our district and it's not the case in the county or the state, the number of student positive cases has been rising. And it was also stated that there were four to five positive cases at Consolidated. That also is not accurate. The day that the decision was made to switch to virtual at Consolidated, there were eight positive cases at that time and then there were two more positive cases the very next day.
Yeah.
The day that the decision was made to pivot to virtual at Consolidated, there were eight positive cases and then there were two additional positive cases the next day.
Some of the information, we have Jamesville, Deloitte and Edgerton and Milton that are all mask mandated. As you can see, the numbers are going up. They're definitely going up in Turner's area.
I don't hear what I'm saying now.
I know, Dave, you said you feel like we're on the one yard line. I I wish I felt like we were on the one yard line. I just I I I wish I could say that were true. I know masks aren't perfect. People are sick of wearing them, including me, but they do reduce transmission. We've been able to keep our kids in school, most of our kids in school. I think we need to be glad for that and I think if you look at the numbers right now, the upper Midwest, Wisconsin's a hotspot. I am worried about what's going to happen around the holidays when people are going to travel. I'm glad that people want to get vaccinated, so I'm very anxious to see what those final numbers are, but I don't I don't think now is the time for a change.
I'll unmute and go next. Obviously, I seconded the motion because I do want us to discuss this. I don't know exactly what I feel about this. I identify a little with what what Dave offered. I think we're close. I don't want to be too quick to reduce protocols if it sends us backwards. I don't have a crystal ball in front of me. I don't know if that's going to be the case. None of us do, obviously. I'm as anxious as everyone to walk back towards normal. I also am pleased with the fact that we've been able to keep kids in school. There are certainly negative effects of having the masks on. I don't think anybody's trying to say that there isn't. So we have to weigh that against what we all fear is if there weren't these protocols in place, if it takes our kids out of school. So personally, I'm trying to find a balance between doing the least harm and keeping everybody in school. Been able to do it so far. I don't if this when this we're going to vote this motion, I presume at some point here. I don't exactly know how I feel about it. I do like the stagger of the upper grade levels having some higher vaccination levels, certainly right now, somewhat more protection. It's probably a stronger argument to have mass choice in the upper grade levels first, given the vaccine status. I'm curious what other folks think about that and particularly Mr. Damon and the team, have you talked about that effect or the staggered protocols?
Yeah, we have talked about that and there are some districts that that have moved in that direction and others that have stayed with universal masking across all grade levels. With the holidays coming up, with the number of families that we have that have students at multiple grade levels, some some people in the family have been able to be vaccinated, but others in the family have not had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. And Rock County's continued strong recommendation that we continue to universal mask in schools and Rock County's requirement that we quarantine close contacts. I think that staying the course until that January 24th date, if we see good results through the holidays is the best path forward. I do understand the the point about making a change sooner at the middle school and the high school. And if the numbers look good through the holidays, that might be something that's built into my recommendation when it comes. But it would, I'd be very hesitant to make that recommendation before we've given families the opportunity to have their 5 through 11 year olds receive both doses and have the fully vaccination status.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, that's fine. Sounds great. So I agree with many of my fellow board members, especially when Dave made the argument that that second dose to those younger students hasn't had the opportunity to even happen yet. So although, again, I can support many of Leslie's ideas in the motion, I can't justify making us mass choice before those 5 to 11 year olds can be fully vaccinated. And then one other thing, just again, I can't I can't justify. The motion says that we would eliminate the quarantine altogether and that that isn't something that that I believe in as this virus is it's contagious. We've seen it's extremely contagious. So eliminating quarantine altogether, regardless of vaccination status, is not something that I would be supportive of at all. And I feel that those I have talked to within the district, many high school students, they are very, very happy to be face to face, whether they are wearing a mask or not. And being in school, especially I would say to that grade level, really matters to them. And I feel that that's that's very, very important. I can certainly sympathize with the students that that are tired of the mask and certainly the staff members as well, but the motion that's on the table right now, I will not support.
Can I add to that?
Of course.
Okay. So Dave, you pointed out that the 5 to 11 year olds haven't had the opportunity to get a second dose and that's accurate. That's why I had the date for the elementary students and staff for January 3rd, because that's a month and a half or almost a month and a half, that they would have that opportunity. And they can go anywhere to get a vaccine. Like they can go to Walgreens, they can go to Walmart, they can go CVS. They don't have to wait for a clinic here and they don't have to necessarily get an appointment with their doctor. The first dose, according to what I've read, has something like an 84% efficacy rate. So, you know, that it's strong. It's not it's not weak by any means. I'm not saying that they don't need the second dose. I'm just saying that by by staggering it the way I did, it gives them the opportunity to get that second dose and still if anybody is lagging behind, they're not going to be You know, I guess, I don't know the right term, they're not going to be without protection. So and then in regards to the other districts, it was mentioned that, you know, not many districts around us have a mask choice policy. Clinton, Edgerton, Evansville, Whitewater, Jefferson are just a few that surround us that have some sort of a mask choice policy, Edgerton being the one that does mask choice at the upper grades. So if if the current motion on the table is not acceptable, would would anybody offer an amendment that would be acceptable and make it acceptable?
Leslie, on the non clinic status, just my own personal experience, so when the announcement came out that the vaccines were open to 5 to 11 year olds, I went out and searched out some of the national pharmacy retail chains and had scheduled an appointment for my son that was going to be a bit of a drive and about a week later than the one that we had because they just simply don't have the staffs like the clinic here that had probably a dozen people, intaking people and administering the shot. And so just from my own experience, so I ended up canceling, I made an appointment which I canceled when the clinic here became available. But just from my own observation, while it's not by any means impossible for someone who wishes to get a vaccine today to do so, depending on people's work schedules and their student schedules and things, it isn't necessarily uber convenient and on demand either. And so putting in, just again, from my own experience of attempting to do this, putting in a bit of a cushion because it isn't, I want to get one today and so therefore it will happen in the absence of a clinic, like we had here at the school, giving people a reasonable amount of time to identify a site that's of reasonable distance that has times that are available to them and their students. Again, I don't know what the specific cutoff should that for that should be, but I know it isn't on a I would like one today so I could get one tomorrow, necessarily that simple, at least from my own experience. So I completely understand your your point and, you know, I think there are a lot of parents that are going through a lot of things as we all are right now. And like I said, just in my own thought of of giving enough time for folks to to make a decision and then be able to execute it, I think is important.
Rich, can you just clarify, we're quarantining close contacts because the county is mandating that? Is that correct?
That is correct. So if we did approve the motion that was made, we would be violating an order from the county.
That was the exact question I was going to ask, so thanks, Rick. So I would offer an amendment to the motion on the floor and in simplistic terms, eliminate the language regarding quarantine protocol. In other words, follow the same protocol we have now for quarantine, close contacts, and have the mask choice option staggered by grade levels the way that Leslie had indicated in her original motion.
So you would like to give that commentary?
Without repeating the whole thing, in essence, she had two pieces to it with the dates relative to mass choice and the second piece being to, in her original motion, eliminate the mass or eliminate the quarantine protocols. So my amendment proposes to just delete the language relative to the quarantines.
So then it would be, beginning November 29th, middle school and high school students and staff will move to a mask option policy and beginning January 3rd, 2022, elementary students and staff will move to a mask optional policy. Does that need a second?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So Joe, we have an amendment proposed by Joe with a second by Leslie. Rich, do you have any comment on that?
I want to make sure that that there is that everyone is understanding the the original motion and amendment. Kim, do you have it in your notes?
I do. I'm wondering, Leslie, if it's okay if we just, you know, if we simplify it a little bit. Absolutely. You've got some reasons in there, which is fine, but it makes for a really good motion. As I noted, your original motion, as of November 29th, 2021, all quarantine policies will end. No, you need the rest of that in there. And then as of November 29th, 2021, the middle school and high school students will move to a mask. to a mask option policy. And then as of January 3rd, 2022, elementary students and staff will move to a mask optional policy. Right? It's the three things.
Yes.
With the original, eliminate the quarantine policy, protocol, November 29th, January 3rd. Like it's a three-part.
Yes.
But now we still have that quarantine.
Yeah, the amendment.
That was the original, yeah. So then the amendment would be to.
Take away that first rule.
Continue to, right, continue to follow the current protocols for quarantine, and then the other two points are the same, 11/29, middle school, high school, January 3rd, elementary.
What was the dates again?
29th, 11/29, month from today, and January 3rd, is that a month?
Not sure.
Oh, that's when it would come down.
Should be for two, Scoban.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my amendment. Rich, what was the clinic held for the five to 11-year-olds?
I would have to look back, you know, just a second here.
Dave, do you know when for some it's a second shot?
Carrie Clubbitt, do you know the date of that clinic?
7th?
November 7th was the, was the first clinic.
November 16th was the.
November 16th.
November 7th is the second dose clinic. Thank you so much.
And then I believe that people are fully vaccinated two weeks after they receive their second dose. They're considered fully vaccinated. Rick, you had asked earlier before, I asked for some clarification on the, on the, the motion and the amendment. You had asked for my thoughts. While I see some potential benefit in having a phased approach to ending the, or going to mask choice and moving away from universal masking, I, I wouldn't recommend the, the timeline that's been presented. I think starting a, a week from today with the high school and the middle school, and starting January 3rd for the younger students are both too soon when we, when we're at a point where we're at our highest number of positive cases and both across our, our schools and across our county and throughout the state, some of the hot, the highest numbers of positive cases across the state since December of 2020. I wouldn't recommend that. It's both, both for the health and safety reason and for being able to keep kids in school. We know that the masks limit the spread of COVID, and we know that the more cases there are, the more close contacts there are going to be. One of the things that we've done very well so far this year is been able to keep students in school as much as possible within the restrictions that are in place from the county. So I, 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 it wouldn't be my recommendation to remove the universal masking at that rapid of a timeframe with the large number of positive cases that we have right now.
I would just counter with, we've gone back before, so if we needed to make adjustments in the future, it could be easily done.
Any other comments or questions on this?
Rich, what happens to the parents who are, have their kids here and are masking them and would want to then have them at home because they don't feel their kids are safe? There's not a virtual option, and it's not a, a grading or semester point or whatever where they're allowed to switch, so what happens?
There is a virtual option, but the virtual options are at the grading periods. So for the younger kids, that would be at the semester break, and that's, that's why in my recommendation, or in what, in the plan that I talked about with our target date, that's why that was chosen.
Any other comments or questions on this?
I think regardless of what date we eventually do, there's some value in putting a, a cushion in there. One reason being, obviously, that there, there is a group of people who will not get vaccinated, and there's a group of people who determined they would get vaccinated right away. But somewhere in between is the group of people who want their children to get vaccinated but wanted to take a wait-and-see approach and make sure that they were comfortable with the outcomes from feedback from their colleagues, friends, and other people out in the community. Those folks at this point haven't had a chance to reflect and, and gather their own observations. And I, I think by having a potential date out there that has a cushion in it, so they have a chance to say, okay, we're to the point where we need to make a decision, either we are or aren't. But if we are, they have a chance to, again, execute and, and follow through and become fully vaccinated. So I think everything we've proposed is pretty clear-cut for those who are going to get vaccinated and for those who are not. But for those on the fence, and I don't know what percentage that constitutes of our student body or the population at large, but if, if we do something very rapidly, we're not giving them a chance to make a decision, potentially.
And I would argue that they have a choice. They've made the choice to wait. But the ones that don't want to get vaccinated, don't want to wear a mask or what have you, don't have that choice. Like the masking part of it is. So it, it's all a choice, and they have that right to wait if they want to. They have the right to get a vaccine right now. But we can't, we can't take away someone's choice just to hold out just in case somebody might want to go get a vaccine later on.
Do you need to get on the 13th agenda first?
Yeah, we have one meeting in December, it's on December 13th.
Will you be giving updates then?
Yeah, we had said that we would do the updates on the second board meeting earlier month, but since there's only one board meeting in December, we'll have to have this on the agenda for that meeting. I guess I, I moved it to have it in there instead, so kind of show the point out.
You know, I'm going to do the update. We have the motion, Dave.
Go on the amendment first.
Right, yeah. Can you just read that back to us, please?
Yes. Motion by Joe, second by Leslie, to continue to follow the current protocol for quarantining. And then on November 29th, the middle, middle school and high school, grade seven through 12, will transition to mask choice. And on January 3rd, 2022, the elementary students and staff will move to mask choice.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? And we're going to do a roll call, Shelley?
No.
Jen?
No.
Ricky's no. Leslie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Okay, that motion fails four to two. Now we will vote on the original motion. Shelley?
No.
Jen?
No.
Ricky's no. Leslie?
Yes.
Joe?
The original motion in its entirety, I would be no.
Dave?
No.
That motion also fails. Anything else on this topic before we move on?
I would just note to make sure that it is on the December.
I would just make sure that it is on the December 13th agenda, please.
Okay, moving on to number three, new business. First item is a spring 2022 school board election. Kim, is this you?
Uh, yes.
We have two seats. Notice up here. We have two seats open for the spring election, and that is Rick Mullins' seat and Leslie Hubert's seat. The first, I have packets available to run for school board, and I've given the two incumbents their packet. The first day that you can circulate nomination papers is December 1st, so please don't do that before December 1st. And then the packet in its entirety, entirety is due on Tuesday, January 4th by 5:00 PM. And the election is on April 5th, 2022.
Any questions for Kim on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next up is item B, action on 2021-22 open enrollment alternative applications. And I would just make a note to the board members that the recommended motion is slightly different than it normally is, so if you could just please note that when making the motion.
Sorry, I will move. These screens. I can get back to it? Oh, no. I'll move to approve the 2021-22 open enrollment alternative applications with the exception of one denial for habitual truancy. Excuse me.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Joe to approve the alternative applications with the one exception for one denial for habitual truancy. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to miscellaneous. A is action on staffing reports, professional and support staff hires, resignations, and retirements.
I'll move to approve the staffing report as presented. Second.
We have a motion from Jen with a second by Leslie to approve the staffing report. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, could you ask the audience to put their masks on, please, following mandate?
Could we put our masks on, please? Mr. Rasmussen? Could you put your mask on?
No. Mr. Rasmussen, we, we have a requirement in our district that people need a mask, so we're going to move on. President, can we go into recess until Mr. Rasmussen hears?
Yes, we are in recess.
Good, we need a break.
We are directing you to leave.
And again, state your authority for me to leave.
We're directing you to leave. You need to go.
State your authority. Doug, go.
Officer, should I go in and ask for him out since he's refusing to leave?
All right.
Thank you, officer.
April 5th? Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we are back in, in session. We are on B, action on gifts and donations.
I will move to approve the gifts and donations with the gratitude of the school district.
Second.
We have a motion from Joe and a second from Shelley. Any questions or discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Next up is meeting dates. Rich?
We have a couple upcoming meetings. HR committee meeting on Monday, the 29th, one week from today at 6:30 here in the PDC. And then our next board meeting is on December 13th. Again, that's our only school board meeting for the month of December. That also is a 6:30 start here, and that's all that we have scheduled.
That's all we have. I would entertain a motion for adjournance. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Everyone have a good holiday and enjoy your time off. Thank you.